Thank you all. I'd like to call tonight's school committee meeting, Tuesday, October 24th, to order. May I please have, I'd like to make an amendment, two amendments to the agenda. First, after the approval, I'd like to make a couple of announcements. And two, I'd like to move up, under the superintendent's report, certificates of academic excellence presentation to above the presentations and discussions. So may, with those amendments, can I have a motion to approve? So move.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Wonderful, thank you. So I just wanted to take the opportunity to remind everybody that we are in red ribbon week. And thank you very much to the Friends of Nantucket Public Schools for what I understand was an excellent event with Mike Smith, both for the public and for students the next day. That took place last Thursday for the public and Friday, the 20th, for students. I think Monday and Tuesday have been full with some events. Tomorrow is wear red day, and hopefully our photo shoot at NIS will not need to be rescheduled due to weather, but there is a plan B. So continue to wear red. And a chat and chowder tomorrow evening at 6:00 PM with Patricia Mitro Costas, Mitro Costas, well, I'm so sorry Patricia, but I really tried. Thursday, a very important public forum on recreational marijuana taking place at the Four Fairgrounds Road Community Room from 4:30 to 6:30 PM. And Friday will be a free movie night for all middle school students at the Dreamland Theater at 8:30 PM. And the winner of the CPS digital PSA contest will be announced. And Saturday, also very important, the Drug Take Back Day at Island Pharmacy for any of your unused and no longer needed pharmaceutical medications. You can bring them to the pharmacy and they will properly dispose of them. So thank you so much for the Alliance Substance Abuse Prevention for ASAP Nantucket for this great week. Did I miss any announcements? We'll get to the NIS open house later on.
Fantastic. So with that, are there any comments from the public? Seeing none, Mr. Cozart?
Thank you. One of the best parts of my job is that periodically I get an opportunity to recognize students and excellence in our schools. Tonight is one of those nights. As the educational leader of the Nantucket Public Schools, the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents has designed an award for academic excellence. And these awards are given to high school students who have distinguished themselves in the pursuit of excellence in many fields throughout their high school careers. And I would like to invite the three students up, have them sit down. I'll give a little background and then maybe they can each tell you about some of the things that they're doing in their high school career.
Fantastic.
So we have Lucille Brissette, we have Dina Rae Weatherly, and Tessa Weldon. Just as a, as a brief intro for them, and they can tell you more about themselves, all three of these students are in the top five in their class. They have GPAs ranging from 4.7 to 4.96. So they're very accomplished students. Lucy is very involved in Veritas. Dina Rae, we've met at Quiz Bowl. She's a worthy Quiz Bowl opponent. And Tessa, many of you have heard Tessa sing. She's an incredible vocalist. And they all have many other talents. And I would love for them just to talk about themselves. This is not a group that likes to do that. But maybe we could start with Lucy.
Welcome to you all. Thank you for coming. And just pull the microphone a little closer to you as you speak and then move it down the line, please. There you go.
Thanks. Okay. I'm very proud to be the editor in chief of Veritas, like Mr. Cozart said. I'm also the president of National Honor Society. I've been on the traveling team on Quiz Bowl with Dina. I've been elected to student council and school council. I'm on varsity lacrosse and swim and dive. Outside of school, I teach Sunday School to second graders and... There's one more other thing. Oh yeah, I play piano. I've been playing piano for 10 years now. Love it.
Because before piano, we were thinking, God, that's not enough.
And are you thinking about any particular schools or field of study?
I'm really interested in genetics and biology and journalism and literature as well. Wide range of things, but that's okay. I really like Georgetown and Hopkins and Northwestern. I found a school called Grinnell in the middle of Iowa. Really cool.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Lucy.
Hi, I'm Dina Weatherly, and I've been an active member in the Spanish Club as well as Veritas. I'm also the co-president of the political group that is new this year. And I am the vice president of the Honor Society. And I've also served as a student council member and the treasurer of my class. And last year, I was, I came first place in the STEM fair competition. And right now, my first choice is Wellesley, and I'm applying early decision. And I'm interested in a lot of things, but as of right now, international relations.
Excellent. Congratulations, Dina.
Thank you. Hi, good evening. I'm Tessa. I do a lot. So I've participated in varsity field hockey. I played on the softball team, and I just started the tennis club. I'm very excited about that. For clubs, I'm a co-officer for Spanish Club. I've done some writing for Veritas. I've gone to some other meetings. For musical things, this is kind of long, I play piano, guitar, trumpet, violin, and I sing. I've qualified for Cape and Islands Music Festival all three years and probably this year again. Senior districts, I got into last year, and I qualified to audition for Allstate. Sadly, I had laryngitis for the audition, so that was unfortunate. But I've been in the musical all three years. Last year I had a lead, and this fall I will be in Sound of Music as Liesel for Theater Workshop.
Oh, great.
Yeah. For schools, I'm looking into Bowdoin and Dartmouth as my tops, and I want to study double major in music and chemistry and maybe go into pre-med.
Awesome. Congratulations, Tessa.
Thank you.
With your permission, I will have them stand up and see if I can address them.
Well, why don't we stand up too for them? Congratulations. Fantastic. Excellent. Congratulations, ladies. Best of luck and everything. Thank you, Mr. Cozart. That's always a wonderful addition to our meeting, why we do what we do. So moving on to presentations and discussions of issues of interest to the committee, we'll have the first quarter budget update with Martin, and following that, we'll go right into the school lunch update. Is that okay with you, Martin?
Good evening. First quarter, at the school side, where we expect to be at this time of the year, we've expanded 28% of total expenditure budgets as compared to 27 last year. We're a little over $600,000 over, mostly due to contractual obligations and salaries, also some outstanding encumbrances, purchase agreements. So at this stage, it is, it is very early in the year, but I think the budget looks good on the school side, both on the expense, the operating expense side and payroll.
And that was anticipated growth because of bringing on a whole new school and new stuff and so on and needs for that. So this is not unexpected growth.
No, no, it's not unexpected. It's, it's, it's very much in line with what we forecast for the year, having, having the new school open. The community school revenues for the first, for the first quarter came a little over $33,000 over last year, which is a positive sign. There is adult education revenues improvement, also in the community, in the pool revolver. There is the swim dolphins program is doing well. And but we are still hesitant, as I point out in the presentation, about the program income. The program income is slightly lagging behind last year, and we're hopeful that, that trend would improve within the next three quarters. But at this point, we're closely monitoring because this is the biggest revenue generator within the, that particular revolver, the swim, swim revolver. Expenses came lower, which was anticipated last year. We had big outstanding encumbrances for the rent on Old South Road, as well as the purchase of vehicle that was subsequently paid off in October. So those, those were expected, but actual expenses at this point are a little over $31,000. So it's a pretty much uneven increase in both revenues and expenses. If it stays that way throughout the year, it, it would be good. Of note here is two things I wanted to point out. First, I sent you a new format of a report that includes three years now of actual encumbrances. I, in discussions with Mr. Cozart, we thought that it gives you a better trend, combines everything within one report, so it makes the information a little easier to read and compare, as opposed to providing two separate reports that cover only two fiscal years at this point. Should you need to, we can, I can expand this report to include another year if needed. I don't know whether that would be an overkill or it would be interesting for you. I mean, I'm open, I have the report comparing back to five years.
Do members have an opinion on?
I think three is more than enough.
Okay, okay. Because it shows trends.
Kind of clouds it, of course.
Yeah.
No, I think three is perfect.
Okay. The other thing...
Thank you for that.
Yeah, absolutely. The, the other thing of note here in the report is this, this year, as promised last year, we are including medical insurance. You've seen it probably. I've apportioned it quarterly. We're still working with the finance department to make sure that it is actually posted with each payroll. And that I was assured today by the assistant, by the treasurer of town, it would happen within the next quarter. So I'm very hopeful that when we present the second quarter, we would have actual medical insurance expenses applied. And this would happen on a biweekly basis.
Great.
The school lunch program, the deficit of 25 for 24 might seem large in comparison to last year, but a lot of it was anticipated with the opening of a new kitchen, staffing increases and every, and all that. Also, we had an unfortunate loss in August in the NHS kitchen, a freezer went down. So that resulted in over $6,000 loss of products that were stored in.
Oh, that's terrible.
Yeah. It has been repaired. Everything is, is good. We filed the claim with the insurance company. But it was an unfortunate event that led to, to a loss. So that's, this is a one-time event. Other than that, payroll costs have increased. And also, I feel, well, in discussion with the district manager, they found out that last year, the reimbursements were overstated, which was subsequently corrected in the first quarter. So we anticipate within the next quarter to things to smooth out and not have that difference. Because as you see, the, the sales in dollar terms have decreased slightly due to that misstatement of the federal reimbursement. The increase we're seeing in lunches served unfortunately is driven by, well, not unfortunately, but from a financial standpoint, unfortunately, is driven by increasing à la carte items. And those are non-reimbursable. So we don't get any reimbursement. So that's, that's what's driven so far, the increase in lunches served. Same operating days in the year 19, for the month of September.
This is really remarkable, though, that the free and reduced meals were 55.8% as opposed to the 33.1% in 2016. So that's incredible growth and outreach in meeting the needs of our families. That's, that's remarkable.
I agree. I think it, a lot of it is directly, the direct certification has to do, to some extent with this as well. So, and I also think, again, I've pointed out several times, Sarah Erickson has done a great job in outreach. She's bilingual, very fluent, so she's been able to communicate with families and...
I just think that's fantastic. And we do see a correlation of that increase with which title funds?
Title one.
Title one.
So, I mean, as a conclusion to this, to this portion of the presentation, we do have a budget subsidy, as you are aware, by contract of $56,704. And we are hopeful that we stay within it. We, I don't think it's reasonable to anticipate the performance of last year, which was phenomenal, but it gives us a reason for optimism for improvements, so.
Do you members have any questions? I have a question. Can you just remind me about the à la carte items? We don't get any reimbursement for anything.
Because it doesn't qualify as reimbursable meal.
Can you give us, so an à la carte item would be a bag of potato chips?
Yes, something that, that doesn't include...
That they're adding on to their main meal?
It could even be, I think, like a yogurt or an additional piece of fruit or pizza, you know, things that are not the standard meal, but that you pick up and can choose to add on to your, and some students, I think, just choose those à la carte items over the actual meal.
Yeah, I, yeah.
It's considered a full nutrition meal, so it's supposed to, that's how it qualifies for reimbursement.
And when was the last time we've increased our, our meal, the cost of an entree? It's been a few years.
2006, I believe.
Oh, 2006?
It's been a long time.
That's more than a few years, okay.
In speaking with the state, we are gonna have an administrative review this year again. And we had one in 2016, and they said that our prices are near the top. But then, then again, for Nantucket and, and to make sure that it's a program that operates within its means, it might be something that we might discuss in the future, so.
Thank you. Natalie, do you have any comments or questions? Okay, all right, great.
Thank you.
Thank you, Martin, very much. So, oh, I think the meeting's over. Oh, no, Mike Horton and the MCAS results. Just kidding. Let's see what's going on. Where would you like us to be, Mr. Horton?
Yes, front row.
Okay.
Great.
Sounds good.
Good evening. My name is Michael Horton. I'm the director of curriculum and assessment for Science, Technology, Engineering, and Math. And I'm joined by Gene Witt.
Hi, I'm the director of curriculum and assessment for the humanities, so ELA and social studies.
So this presentation was extra challenging to put together this year, and I'm gonna explain that in a few minutes. And it may be even, even more difficult to actually present. So please bear with me. Am I the last item on the agenda? So I have, have some time?
I've got a few things.
Okay.
You have a few things.
All right, so...
You're being way rigorously in this round, but I'm just kidding. Just kidding.
So I'm not on a clock. So you're gonna hear us, you know, talk about our frustration with the constant, you know, kind of state of flux we've been in with standardized tests, going from MCAS to PARC and now to MCAS Next Generation. We're gonna talk about, you know, trying to compare apples to apples when, when data is reported in a variety of different ways. So we're gonna begin a little bit with frustration, segue into disappointment because the results are not, you know, great, and we have a lot of work to do. But most of you know me that I am an optimistic person. So I'm gonna try to end on a few positive notes and reference some things that we're already currently doing, working on to improve our performance on standardized tests. So this is a new year. So this past spring was the first year of the Next Generation MCAS, okay? Along with that came the reporting of the data with new performance levels, okay? The legacy MCAS levels would be advanced, proficient, needs improvement, and warning, and failing. There were change subtly to exceeding expectations, meeting expectations, partially meeting expectations, and not meeting expectations, okay? Now, what's tricky is that PARC was not used in a four-level system at all. PARC was under five different levels. So 2016, 2015 was reported completely differently. So almost to compare apples to apples, you'd have to look back to compare 2014 to 2017. But that's not necessarily a good thing to do. We were discouraged to do that by the state. You can do it if you want to, but right off of that, a lot of things changed. On top of that, you know, the old MCAS was scaled on a 200 to 280 scaling score. It took us about a year to figure out exactly how that translated to number of questions, right or wrong, on each student's test, and what point values were assigned to different types of questions. PARC went a completely different direction with a scale of 650 to 850, and divide up those five different performance levels. To now, Next Generation MCAS is scaled on a 440 to 560 level. So it's gonna be some time to kind of figure out that black box formula of what that actually means. But the bottom line is, a lot of things changed, okay? It's frustration. On top of that, because we participated in PARC the last two years, we are not being given an accountability level. We're not even being held harmless at Level 2. We are just receiving no level, okay, as a district. That's for the schools who participated in PARC. So that's grades 3 through 8 for us. You'll see later on that the high school did receive accountability level, just because the high school, it's been MCAS all the way through. MCAS never, high school never transitioned to PARC. On top of that, you know, we were keeping close tabs on our school percentile level relative to other schools in the state, knowing that if we fall in the bottom 20% of the state, we'd be automatically placed on Level 3, which is a little, you know, anxiety laden. But you do get a little bit of extra support from the state in the forms of some assistance center actions and some things put in place. But that's not even being reported. So we're not quite sure where we fall relative to other schools across the state. And lastly, my favorite item, the CPI, okay? The Composite Performance Index, which for many years, from MCAS through PARC, it was the apples-to-apples method to kind of compare growth from one year to the next, look at student progress within the same cohort as it moved from grade 3 to grade 10, and also look at grade 8 to grade 8 to grade 8 in terms of, okay, how are we doing with curriculum, how are we doing with instruction, how are we doing with other factors and variables out there. With no CPI, there's no PPI. With no PPI, there's no C PPI, okay? Progress and Performance Index is the PPI. It's a formula which you will see because the high school did receive a PPI score, which we'll get to in the end. And then the C PPI is a cumulative, which is a four-year rolling average, where four years ago is weighed only once, and three years is weighed twice, so on and so forth, okay? So a little bit of frustration just trying to get into the data to compare like data to like data and like reports to like reports. So then, we printed out some accountability, and it looks like publicly, when you look at Nantucket Elementary School, that the accountability level is, is that they're doing wonderfully. It says yes, 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 yes. But when you look closely, that's just participation levels. So the state said, okay, you're not gonna get accountability level, except if you didn't test all your kids. So they did actually look at participation, and our participation is basically perfect, okay? Kids are absent, we hunt them down, we make sure that they participate. So that is something that you'll see. Anyone goes and publicly looks to that, and it looks great. But it'll say no level, but it will say yes, 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 all the way down because all our subgroups, all our students participated in MCAS last year. I just put this in here, if you're below a 90% participation rate in any subgroup, you're automatically placed on Level 3. So we could have been put on Level 3 if we didn't have the participation rate that we had. High school, as I said a minute ago, they will have accountability levels, and you'll see that because MCAS are being compared to MCAS being compared to MCAS. Something that was interesting that they, you know, kind of changed a little formula on, that looking at low graduation rates, that now, you know, if a graduation rate is below 67%, it's an automatic Level 3 for high schools, okay? It does not apply to us, okay? But it's just interesting that this is what the state was using to determine accountability levels. So on our district website, there's a bunch of links to documents and interactive guides for parents to interpret the Next Generation MCAS, okay? Parents are gonna be mailed home their students' individual scores in the next week or so, okay? So we've already populated our district website with a bunch, a bunch of links with guidance through this transition, okay? And one of them is a PowerPoint. And in that PowerPoint, I just wanted to pull up this one slide because it kind of framed the rest of our discussion here, which when we, when we enter into the realm of disappointment. Why did my child score proficient on past MCAS, but now is only partially meeting this year? And the response is that this is a more rigorous test, okay? Like the PARC was, there's additional steps, okay? There's multiple step questions where some of the following questions really rely heavily on the student getting the first part correct. There's some more explanation required, there's more writing required. So it's very possible that, you know, if you scored proficient in the past with this adjustment, that students dropped a level. That frames some things because we didn't have many students score in the exceeding expectations level. So I interpret this that, you know, not only did students drop from proficient to partially meeting, but students also dropped from exceeding down to proficient. A few other things here, you know, ideas looking where it falls in the range, you know, is it really close, you know, because partially meeting, you might be off by one or two points, okay? You're still labeled as partially meeting, but if you're just almost on the cusp, it may come down to just one or two questions that would separate whether a student was partially meeting or met expectations, okay? And then the last one in the bottom, and we're gonna come back to this a few times, is that the state has had some history here of how they interpret and publicly, you know, share the state overall performance on MCAS, okay? I might get into part of that later on. But they're looking at this year as a baseline year, okay? It ties into the fact that a lot of data is not being measured, not being compared with the PPIs, accountability levels of the, excuse me, the percentiles of schools. So that we should not be comparing this year's data, this first year of Next Generation, to the PARC from last year, or for other schools who took MCAS to MCAS last year. I think you already heard that because the measures are so different, they're just discouraging that, okay? So for a guy who likes to look at the CPI over 10, 12 years and look at our growth over time, that's been stripped away, okay? So it's very, very frustrating. So with this baseline, it kind of gives everyone a new beginning, all right? So when you see our data later on, it's also an opportunity. I'll come back to that with the optimistic side of this, is like, okay, we have really some places to show some quick improvement over the next few years for some things that we were doing last year and this year. The state, you know, started playing around with MCAS, no child left behind, back, back in 2001, 2002. A class of 2006 was the first year who had their scores actually count in grade 10 for graduation. The bar was set very low, okay? It's the first year, we all knew that. Over time, the state kind of played around with the curve because what they always did was they released the scale after the results were in, which I always thought was strange, because then they could shift the bar in order to have a certain percentage of students above or below that bar, or certain schools above and below that bar, or certain schools at Level 3 or... schools at Level 3, or Level 2, or Level 4, based upon where they slid that. The goal, if you remember, was everyone was going to be 240, which is 100 CPI by 2014, okay? In 2011, the state realized that's not gonna happen. So, they said, all right, let's do this new thing where we say, whatever your CPI is, let's say it's 70, you wanna get to 100, all right, let's cut it in half, all right? So, instead of saying you need to get up 30 points between 2011 and 2014, you need to go up 15 points, okay? So, your, you know, gap proficiency target was 85, and not, no longer 100, you just had to get up to 85 from 70, okay? And that seemed real realistic, and, okay, it's interesting, I see what they're doing here. Well, then 2014 happened, and PARK entered the mix, so everything was kind of thrown out the window, all right? And 2017 was gonna be this year to kind of make this work, to cut things in half, so, sorry, I might've said the wrong thing, it was 2014 was the year that they started the proficiency gaps, so everyone had three years by 2017. So, this should've been the year that we were looking at, how did we do relative to that? Well, what I'm hearing now is, that project was never finished, okay? It was never tabulated, because this transition from MCAS to PARK, back to MCAS, now we have a new baseline, okay? So, it's like a new beginning for the system all over again. It's gonna be interesting to see what improvement targets are set over the next few years, okay? The real good news about this, that I love, as a math guy, is that, and unfortunately, they did take longer to release the information, but one of the things I've read is that they're setting the bar, the target, to be consistent over the next five years. And how many kids are above or below, it's just gonna be the number who are above and below, they're not gonna slide that bar up and down with the percentages or numbers. I think that's a more valid way to do it, personally, I think it's a more accurate way to do it. That allows us really to look at ourselves to grow, to grow, to grow, to grow. What will be interesting is that the high school you've heard did not participate, okay, in PARK, they did not ever change from MCAS, they're still in the legacy MCAS, the original MCAS going back to 2002. In the next couple of years, the high school will be changing to next-generation, so it'll be interesting to see how the high school transition is handled, is it gonna be handled the same way, and they get a new baseline? So, that's something we're gonna have to keep an eye on, all right? Again, this is part of the frustration, but I just wanna share, the baseline is interesting, it kind of gives us a new beginning, all right? But it did kind of wipe out some of the targets that we're looking at to close the gaps over the last couple of years. So, without further ado, let's get into some of the results of how we performed. And again, we cannot compare year to year, so what you're gonna see is data just being compared, but how many students are exceeds, how many students are meeting, how many students are partially meeting, and how many students are not meeting expectations. So, Jean's gonna jump in with ELA, I'm gonna jump back into math and science, we're gonna flip-flop back and forth to mix it up a little bit, in case you're sick of the sound of my voice.
Hello. So, I get to show you the raw numbers first, which are not really pretty. And we are comparing to the state, and that's basically the only comparison that's being given. The one thing I actually like about the data and the way it's presented now, is it forces you to take a deep look at what's happening in your own schools, what's happening with your own students in your own classrooms, and how can we remedy that? It's hard to look at what's happening, though, because right now, we have fewer students exceeding or meeting expectations than the state. And I'm also not real comfortable with the number of students meeting and exceeding expectations, I think we can do better than this. I want to strive to do better than this, to improve. So, just, you know, you can see the data for yourself, the not-meeting expectations starts to the left, and it works its way over, and our exceeding expectations, our percentages are quite low. There are no zeros for the elementary school, which is good, it means we do have some students who are scoring exceeding expectations. But, we really wanna look at, you know, how can we help more students get to that next level? And I think one of the interesting things for me is thinking about taking lessons from other disciplines that have done this, and particularly ELL, and thinking about the levels of students for English language proficiency and teaching to the next level. So, we need to meet our students where they are, and then push them to that next level. So, that, I think, is great in the sense that it's forcing us to be accountable to our students who are in front of us right now, and to know those students, so we can help those students make meaningful progress.
Give it back.
At CPS, the news is similar to NES, low percentages of students, lower percentages of students meeting expectations and exceeding expectations than the state, with the exception of, in 8th grade, we had a greater number of students meeting expectations. You cannot help but notice, if you add the last two columns, that we are still below in total meeting expectations and exceeding expectations. So, a little bit of a positive that we were above, but when you look at that whole bracket, which is, in essence, what the state reports out on, we do get information about meeting expectations and exceeding expectations. And that's the closest apples-to-apples comparison that I can see, because for PARK scores, it was always reported how many students were, and what percentages were in Level 4 and Level 5. So, that, there is that comparison, that, you know, Level 4 and Level 5 were where you wanted to be on PARK, meeting and exceeding is where you want to be, and I think those titles are a dead giveaway of that as well.
So, similar story in math, as Jean mentioned, the common practice is to add up the meeting and exceeding, okay? So, add the 38 and the 3, and you take the 41 and compare it to the state of 49, okay? You'll see across the board that generally speaking, we are, you know, 7 to 10 percentage points below the state average. What we really wanna strive for is being in the top half. Later on, we're gonna talk about student growth percentile, you wanna be at the 51 percentile and above, that's where you earn some extra points. Obviously, 51 percentile, that means you're performing higher than the majority of students who are below where you were the previous year. So, obviously, if these numbers are below 50% meeting and exceeding, then we're gonna be below the state average, consequently, we're gonna be below the growth percentile target of 51. Moving on to CPS, you know, similar situation, where you add up the meeting and exceeding, and you can see across the board, we are below the state average when you add up those two columns for the state. For science, a little bit higher there, but, you know, more of the same. If you add up those percentages, they are still, you know, below the state averages on the grade 5 and the grade 8. It's just interesting to point out here, the science is still legacy MCAS, it has not transitioned to next-generation. So, just, that's why you still see what's called the legacy MCAS levels, warning, needs improvement, proficient, and advanced. Okay, so, you wanna do this one? So, as we're getting to some good news...
So, this is for 2017 for NHS, and we have ELA, math, and science. And if you add up the last two columns, for ELA, we are at 91% of our students are proficient or advanced, and that is exactly the same as the state, so we're even there. That is rather typical of our performance going forward, or, sorry, according to past history. So, this is generally good news. Again, though, the English department is still always looking for, you know, what can we do to improve, and has really dove in deeply to the data that they have, and have actually also asked for information about what the next-generation MCAS is going to look like, so that they can be best preparing their students to meet those challenges, and to know what the test is going to look like for them. It will be interesting to see when the high school transitions, particularly because this group, our cohort of students that are coming up, will have had next-generation MCAS the next time for the go-around for the test. Do you wanna talk about math and science?
Yep. So, this is more, you know, what we wanna strive for, is, you know, math is a little below the state average, but not as prominent as you saw in NES and CPS, and then the science, I think, is slightly ahead, it's 76 compared to 75, okay? So, this is more typical of the strong scores that high school has put up the last few years. And then, once again, high school has the same legacy, warning, needs improvement, proficient, and advanced level reporting system. So, I throw this in, I just threw that slide in there because I wanna be consistent, you know, what we had for NES and CPS was putting it in the percentage of students at each level, so this is the high school. Now, with the high school, because it was MCAS to MCAS, we can actually go back to my favorite friend CPI, and I really like visual type of slides where we can see growth and progress over time. So, if you want, you wanna do the ELA?
Oh, sure.
I'll do the math.
So, the ELA CPI, it didn't suck at our schools, and it's the red, and if you notice, we hover just about on the line, dipping slightly below and going slightly above. So, our performance has been pretty steady. The other thing that I think is positive in general is that that performance is pretty strong. When you look at the percentage of students who are making effective progress and meeting the kind of achievement they need, it's there in ELA.
Similar story in math, okay? Last year, we were 85, we dropped 3/10ths of a point to 84.7, so just like the previous slide, you know, dropping from 97.8 to 96.3, that's relatively flat, you know? 96.3 is a great score, it's just, it's testing to show how, wow, that's pretty much the same as the state. We're a little bit more behind in math, you know, the state average is also lower for math across the state than ELA, but, you know, relatively flat the last four years there for the math CPI. For science, if you remember last year, I was doing a jig and dancing about how I was the highest ever at 92.4, and sometimes when you're performing really well, you know, it's hard to keep, to maintain that, so we slipped a little bit, 89, again, not awful, not bad, it's pretty much just like the high school ELA, very consistent with the state average. Now, that's just at the state average, all right? So, you can see how the state averages are a lot higher in grade 10 across the board than they were in the, if you were to pull out the other slide to try to figure out a CPI, you can see how, you know, the state average is performing pretty high, and we're right there with them. Now, again, just like you said, for NES and CPS, we wanna be on the other side of that line, we wanna be on the top side of the state average. So, just starting to dive a little bit deeper, you know, going back here, okay, the biology dropped, you know, a couple points there, from 92.4 down to 89, so dropped 3.4. But, there's some more stories to be told, so 2016, we had that awesome 92.4, they don't have the CPI here, but trust me, I got it from somewhere else and threw it in there. But, if you look last year, if you add the two blue, all right, the advanced and proficient together, you get 81%, that's fantastic, that's how we scored 92.4. So, this past spring, you add the 43 and the 35 together, it's only 78, so we slipped, so you can kind of, you know, see where that, you know, 3.4 drop came from. But, the 43% for advanced is actually higher than the advanced 40% in 2016, so we had more students, or a high percentage of students, score advanced this past year than the previous year. On the same wavelength, the 10% that failed in 2016, this past year only 7% failed, okay? So, that's kind of where it was almost like a wash a little bit, to get almost a relatively flat score from one year to the next, because you can see how, yeah, we didn't have as many score proficient as the previous year, we had a few more needs improvement, but you actually get extra credit points when you can increase your advance and lower your warning failing. So, there is some good news in there, even though we slightly dropped there in science, and we're gonna try to pick out some neat positives for those last couple of slides. So, talked about growth, you really wanna be above 51, the state sets 51 as the target, that you're in the top half, you know? The way the growth is calculated is, if Jean and I took the test in 2016, and we both scored, say, like a 230, all right, let's use the old scaling system for a minute, and then the next year, 2017, Jean's score jumped from 230 to 240, and my score went from 230 down to 220. Jean's growth relative to other students like me who took the test the previous year and scored the exact same number of 230, she's gonna be a higher percentile, because she outscored like peers from the previous year, okay? So, the state did a lot of calculation of kids to kids, again, because they couldn't really get into a lot of the data that wasn't reported from PARK to here, but they could do a lot of that. So, I thought this is important to throw up, the student growth percentile for ELA and math. So, in some places, we're pretty consistently in the 40s, all right? Just one of our big goals has gotta be, go from 44 to 54, let's jump across that line. If we're six below, okay, let's jump six above the other side up to 56, and a few administrators are talking about that today. There are some positives in here, okay? Again, high school ELA, 69.5, that's a really strong growth. Unfortunately, it's a little bit below 71 the previous year, but you saw how high that score was back in 2016, but that is great, okay? In 5th grade, the 60 is great, that's above that target of 51. In 7th grade, ELA, that 63 is great, okay? You see the previous scores, so even though this math was 48, that's an improvement of 11 points from the 37 from 2016. So, that is going in the right direction, okay? Which is nice to see up at the grade 10, where it's very high-stakes testing for the MCAS. All right, not gonna spend much time on this, this is more, put it as a placeholder, in case you wanna come back and look at this. This is where now the high school can be given a PPI score, okay? In 2016, this was the high school's PPI score of 75, and they earned all these different points up here, and this is the reason why they earned those different points, as in the presentation last year. We also got a whole bunch of extra credit, you know, for decreasing the percentage of ELA failing, for decreasing the percentage of math failing, for increasing the science advanced, for decreasing the science failing, so we got these extra credit points. What happens is, you take all those figures, you divide by how many there are, or actually take all these figures, add up these extra credit, because they're extra credit, and divide it, how many indicators you have, and you get the 75, okay? So, just for comparison's sake, the high school PPI actually dropped from 75 down to 56, and that's one year to the next, okay? So, this is the 2016 column, I just kind of copied it over. So, for narrowing the gap proficiency to CPI, we got 100 points because it jumped up so much, the 97.8 was above our target, so we got 100 CPI points. So, what kind of stinks is, because we went down, even though that 90-plus score, 96 score is really high, because it went down 1.5 relative to 97.8, we only earned 25 CPI points, all right, for 2017, okay? Anything within negative 2.5 to positive 2.5 is considered no change, all right? For math gap narrowing, it went down .3, that 3/10ths, we just, we earned 25 points, if it actually declined, you get zero points. Oh, here's one right here, science, it actually declined 3.4, declined by more than 2.5, but you remember, dropping down to 89, you were still right even with the state average, just from that high score of 92.4 the previous year, that negative 3.4 earned us zero points, zero, you know, you know math, it crushes you, because now you're dividing by the indicator, but you scored no more points for the total sum. Just in comparison, look, we scored 75 the previous year, this was pretty good, you know, the growth percentile, while you're above 51, you get 100 points, hey, look, this is awesome, here's a positive, okay? The previous year, when we scored 25 for the math percentile, we got 75 this time, so we recouped some of the points back. So, even though 48 is not 51, not our target, it's plus 11. So even though forty-eight is not fifty-one, not our target, it's plus eleven from the previous, from the thirty-seven, so it's considered on target, because we increased by at least ten points. So we got seventy-five points there. Four-year grad rate, on target. And then this was something that came up last year, I talked about how we actually had zero points last year. And, you know, Dr. Bucky talked about, man, that is really persnickety, that is really unfair, how we're getting zero points for our drop rate, dropout rate, how that's calculated. So we reduced the dropout rate from two point five percent down to one point four percent. And that's data from two years ago, just because it takes a while to actually calculate, you know, data from the end June of the year, and whether students have actually fulfilled all their credits or not. That data is always about a year behind. So that was neat, we earned some points back. And then here's the big thing, the previous year, because we had such an up year at the high school, we earned a whole bunch of extra credit points, okay? This year, we only got plus twenty-five for decreasing the math failing. It's neat to show, though, we got plus twenty-five two years in a row for decreasing the math failing percentage, okay? We didn't get all the extra credit that I just pointed out on the previous slide that we had the previous year. When you calculate all that, you get you get fifty-six, okay? Not awful, because, you know, a couple of years, we've had thirties, all right? But the target is seventy-five. So if we made that target and we were kind of celebrating that last year, we slipped a little bit, but this is why, okay? And all these different different categories. That's a lot of information, all right? But I wanted to share this because I couldn't do it with the other schools, okay? So I I think it's important to look at that system, how it continues to to play out for the high school. Do you want to do this one, and then I'll do the special ed? So we also decided to drill down a bit further for some of our EL groups and our special ed student groups.
So for our EL students who are in grades three through eight, who are taking the next generation's MCAS, there were lower percentages than the state in exceeding expectations and meets expectations pretty much across the board for both math and ELA. However, when you look at the profile of our students and you dig even deeper, and and you look at the story behind each student, you will see that a lot of our, and and this is not information that the state delves into, you will see that a lot of our Ls are year one or two, that they didn't, you know, that they've only had two years in the country. So they, the reason why they're not scoring at meeting expectations or exceeding expectations yet, you know, is is something that we hope that they will be able to get there with continued growth and support. And when you look at this cross-sectioned with access, which I don't want to do too much, because you will hear a report on that, they are growing in their English language proficiency. And that growth is then going to translate into meeting and exceeding the expectations these tests as well.
And the EL director, Kelly Cooney, will be delivering a much more elaborate, more in-depth report in a couple of weeks at one of the next meetings. She's got some some more data to to look more closely at the numbers here. Special ed, you know, similar story, if you add up the the two columns there in the end, we're we're still lagging behind the the state percentages. You can you can see some, you know, a little bit higher numbers there at the high school, but pretty consistent with the rest of the information that you that you see. Okay, so last slide, I promise. I didn't sneak two more in there just earlier, right, Karen? I was trying to, I didn't, okay? Overall, you know, we are across the board, grades three through ten, we are below the state average on the math standards, okay? Something that teachers, administrators can do is print reports out that shows how we did to the state average for the different domains and indicators for each of the standards, okay? That is consistent with the data. You just saw that we are below that line, that we're that we're below the state average pretty much across the board for math standards. Grades three through eight are also below the state average on ELA standards. As you saw that Jean reported, grade ten is actually even, okay? But three through eight is still lagging below, a lot of numbers in the red, okay? Like these here, negative fourteen relative to the state average for a certain topic or a certain concept, okay? Couple of the positives, you know, we pointed out that the student growth percentile, we met that goal of fifty-one, you know, anything about fifty-one is great, so let's go for seventy-five, let's go for higher, but it's nice to see some of the numbers in the sixties. Grade five math, grade five ELA, grade seven ELA. We perform better on fractions, okay? Now, this comes with an asterisk, okay? Because to do this analysis, I had to look back to two thousand fourteen. I couldn't get the same type of report from Park for twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen. So the last time, it was compared relative to the standards, back in twenty fourteen with the legacy MCAS. We were negative fourteen, ranged from negative fourteen to negative nineteen, okay? And that's just double digits, almost like negative twenty, all right, for fractions. We recognized that, we put some effort into looking at how we taught fractions, looked at different resources in teaching fractions. We moved the time of year that we teach fractions in grades three, four, and five from the end of the year to earlier in the spring, so students had more exposure. We did like some fraction Fridays and some games and things. So look at that, you know? All right, we're still a little bit red, but it's pretty close. That's that's a pretty good improvement to going to be now negative two, negative four, okay? What's not here is that when you look at the standards report, our geometry and measurement is now negative fourteen up to negative twenty. So, oh, boy, all right. So we made some adjustments on fractions, and we taught fractions really well, but at the expense of geometry and measurement, okay? So we have to do a better job of covering all standards and figure out a way to expose kids to all content before the test is given in May. Because when talking to teachers, if they move fractions up, guess when they taught geometry last year? Taught geometry from May fifteenth to June fifteenth, okay? So we need to address that, all right? Because it's not there. But trust me, when we look at measurement and geometry, now we have a focus. It needs to be across the board, but it's reassuring to see we can do it, okay? We can do it, we just got to do it for everything. You heard me say it already, I added a third year. I talked about the math percentage going down to eight point four percent failing at the high school. Twenty sixteen was eleven point three percent. I went back a year and found out that in twenty fifteen, the percent of students failing math was thirteen point five. So three years in a row of, you know, lowering the percentage of students failing math at the high school. That translated into student growth percentile from thirty-seven up to forty-eight, which I already talked about. Someone was quoted in the paper, I think it was the superintendent from Falmouth, that they were not happy with their result either. He didn't say frustrated, I think he did say disappointed, but he followed it up with, it reaffirms our focus. It reaffirms our focus on reading, writing, open response questions, math, math centers, small group instruction, guided math. We have so many things in place that, you know, we're we're doing it. We're getting some really great feedback from teachers this year of different things that are happening at each school that are that are very positive. That is what I am able to fall asleep at night to, is to know that, okay, we've got some great people, some talented teachers, a strong admin team, working on the right things to improve, okay? Couple that with the fact, this is the new baseline, okay? It's kind of like a new beginning. What can we do from here? What can we do to really improve our performance on standardized tests? Before we do questions, anyone else you want to add add to that?
Yeah, just, I I think it's really, the the positive piece is that this is a new baseline, that this is a place to start, and that we have a lot of information about the specific areas that we need to focus on. We know which standards we're we're having difficulty getting students to meet. We know which skills and which types of questions are challenging for our students. So now our goal is, how do we get the information to the teachers so that they know as well and, you know, communicate that? And then how do we build our curriculum and instruction and our assessments so that we can better measure this as we go? It's interesting, because I get so excited for when this data is going to come out. To me, it's like data Christmas. And I I love the 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 numbers, but I'm not really a numbers person. And I like what you can find when you dig a little deeper and go behind that. And I like that this gives us the ability to, you know, in teachers' individual classrooms, for them to look at the students that are in front of them and say, I can see that this is what you need. And this is only one point and only one metric. And so, you know, I hope we're using other data points, and I know we are. And that's another thing that's reaffirming, is I know that we're working hard to triangulate the data. But we've got to really look at each of those students as, what is it that you as a student, you as a learner, need? And how can I best support you so you can grow?
So questions for us?
We're going to take our seats.
Yeah, please. Come on up.
You guys want to, you can have a seat or feel free to stand, whichever you like.
I'm comfortable standing right now. Maybe if we need to go back to a slide or something.
Well, thank you both very much. That is a lot of information to digest between the two of you and the administrative team, so we appreciate the more digestible format you put it in for us. Right now, I'll ask if any of the committee members have some questions. Donna, would you like to start?
Yes, I don't have any specific questions.
Okay. Great. I don't have questions. Thank you.
My lucky day.
So with the no level assigned because of Park, what does that mean? What it what what happens with that?
Accountability levels, you know, one is great. One is, you pretty much have freedom to spend your budget any way that you want, okay? The state says, keep doing what you're doing, you're making awesome progress. Level two might be because, okay, you're doing well, but there's something that we see where, you know, you're not making progress with a certain group of students, okay? You're not closing gaps fast enough, which is what it was from twenty fourteen to twenty seventeen. Then start, some restrictions start to pop in, you know, you can't do this, it might affect our grants a little bit, you got to spend more money.
I don't want to interrupt you, but I understand the different levels. What I'm more concerned about is when we say no level this year. What what does that mean for us?
No level. I don't know how to describe it, there's no level.
It means that there are no sanctions, there's no distinction of being level one, there's no of the sanctions or penalties that would come with three, four, and five. Next year, we would expect that they will assign an accountability level, because they'll have the baseline and another year.
I understand, okay. So there's there's, while it's not a free pass year, we're not actually in trouble this year.
The the only problem would have been if the high school hadn't met their participation rate, or the other schools, and their graduation rate.
Okay.
But but they're, it's really, it's another pass.
Okay.
High school is still level two, by the way. District has no level.
That was my other question. Okay, so high school's still level two. And then that is the same, just to reiterate, that is the same for every district who chose to do Park within the state. Yeah.
Except if you were level four, level five. And I assume he's talking about people, but he had the power to move a district in or out of the four and five. And that's them just thinking, okay, what resources do we have? What's the top priority? You know, for the schools that have already been labeled as level four, level five.
Gotcha. Okay, so they're figuring that, but we're not in that group because we are, okay, fantastic.
We were held primus for three years in a row at level two.
Okay, fantastic. So I guess my next is a comment, not a question. And it's probably a rhetorical question, if there is one, but I'm very lucky to have sat, I think this is my ninth presentation of MCAS or standardized test results. And each year, it's remarkable to me to see the struggling scores in the elementary school and the middle school and the absolute shining scores that when we get to the high school. And so that gives me great pause and great confidence that we are preparing our students well for high school, and they're doing well in high school. We, there's, it's, it's a bit profound for me, and I don't understand where the disconnect comes in, because you would think with the scores we have, and, you know, we've had varying ways of reporting the scores, but, you know, typically, we see some struggling in in the elementary school and middle school, and then we see, boom, oh, my God, these kids are fantastic when they get to high school. So as a parent and as a community member, I see your frustrations, and I see the the dedication of our administrative team and our teachers to continually work to address those. I'm not concerned when I see the end result of how fantastic and and how prepared our students are for whatever they're going to do next. And I think those high school scores give me, okay. Am I wrong in feeling okay with that?
So you you're probably remembering, four or five years ago, we might have had an off year.
Yeah.
Okay? And I made the point that, look, if you follow the students, if you take the same kids from grade in, grade out, that they're nailing it in high school, and they're they're getting there, and they're they're passing the task, and we we have, seldom do we have a student that's held from graduating for not completing the MCAS, you know? They'll, we'll get them there.
Yeah.
I I do need to say, though, that, you know, when you look closely at the data, our high school, okay, ninety-six, ninety-seven, that's still just at the state average. Now, there's not a lot of room to go from ninety-six to one hundred. So there must be fifty percent of the other high schools across the state in between ninety-six and one hundred, because we're right at the state average.
Yeah.
And generally speaking, the state average, performance-wise across the state, is higher at the high school than it is at the at the elementary school.
Which is remarkable.
Can I make a comment, too? It's because those students have incentive. They they have to pass to graduate. Whereas our elementary school, middle school students, it's a test to them.
And they're little.
It's a test. And they are, they're getting, they're trying to get used to it, they're trying to adapt. No one at that age wants to take a test, and there's really no incentive for them to say, you know what, I really need to do the best job I can do.
You know, there's lots of theories to get into, but I'm not going to go into them right now, but I think that's definitely one of them. Another is that, you know, early on, how young is too young to test students? And if our students are struggling with reading, they can't read the test, even with a math test, it's not always a math problem, you know? It's a it's a word-based test, okay? It's a text-based test. But when the students start to click, and they start to read, the test itself, content-wise, is no harder relative to tenth to tenth than it is fourth to fourth. It's just, okay, now they actually can understand the question it's asking them.
But the stakes are higher, too.
Absolutely.
I mean, so when my my kids are, oh, I've got another, you know, day of testing, it's it's hard to get them excited to go in to take this test, you know? And it's like, maybe.
And to do their best.
And to do their best.
I do need to, I do need to, just sorry to interrupt, but I didn't, I have the thought in my head, this this is all true, but still, it it bothers us when, okay, our high school is is doing well, but our same elementary school, relative to other elementary schools, is more behind. You know, why aren't we in the same path as Belmont, you know, or Concord, or even Tisbury, okay, over in the vineyard? You know, if their high schools, right, where our high school is, why is their elementary school so much higher than our elementary school? You know, like, we should be in the same kind of growth track that they're on. And that's something that we we constantly wrestle and struggle with.
I say we reward them. Rewards, rewards.
I guess my my only other comment is just a reminder for us on the committee, I'm sure you all remind yourselves of this every day. And I think, Jean, you mentioned this, this is one metric by which we measure success. It's not a comprehensive picture of our performance in general, it's one piece of it. And I think you're right, the the state has been playing a, I don't know what game it is, but has been struggling itself to figure out what that baseline is, and we're struggling to keep up while we're trying to deliver quality instruction and educational tools to our kids. So I I just, I guess, want to say that, you know, driving our kids to perform well on these tests should never be the goal. The test should be a measurement of how well we're preparing them, educating
The test should be a measurement of how well we're preparing them educationally. And this is one piece of that reflection for us. I know that every one of you wants to do better, I know you aim to do better. We do too. And so we need to know from you what you need to do better. And we need to know how we can support you in your efforts to achieve those growth goals. But I have no doubt that there's the capacity and the willingness in this room and in this district to do that. So thank you very much for your support. And I lost my agenda. Oh, wait, here it is, I got it. Committee discussion and votes to be taken. So may I have a motion to amend policy A D C? Tobacco and other products prohibited on school premises.
May I make a quick comment since you shared? Zona and myself both sit on the committee, should we table this in case there are any questions or comments?
I would encourage you to go ahead and pass this.
Okay.
I think what, the policy is essentially the same. Because of the uptick in vaping at the high school and we learned today from the district attorney's office, it's an uptick that all schools are facing on the mainland as well. We wanted to make it very clear and have an actual reference to the word vaping so that nobody would think that it wasn't included. I would encourage...
And if I'm not mistaken, we've presented this and if there were comments or concerns, either Pauline or Tim could have presented that before, because it goes to...
This is the first time.
This is the first time. It's an amendment, not a new policy. I see. Okay. So move. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
A motion to approve a donation from the Joseph L. Viera Fund to the NPS Athletic Department for fourteen pair of Champion sweatpants and training shorts as part of the uniform for football practice.
So move. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much to the Joseph Viera Fund for that support. Vote to approve the NHS field trip...
Oh, I really wish.
Chaperone? To Rome and Pompeii, Italy for students in the Latin Club during April break. The specific dates will be to be determined, but likely somewhere between four sixteen and four twenty. May I have a motion to approve? So move. All in favor? I hope it rains every day. No, I'm just kidding, I'm just kidding, I am totally just kidding, I hope it's sunshine and gorgeous. May I have a motion to approve the October third, twenty seventeen minutes? So move. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. And transfers and invoices? I don't think I see them. Oh, do I have, oh, I have, I'm sorry, they were stuck, I got them. May I have a motion to approve our transfers and invoices? So move. All in favor? Thank you very much.
Could I just go back, John is giving me a heads up. That says two thousand and eighteen, but it's two thousand and nineteen on that trip because they want to plan well in advance.
Thank you.
There's still time for a chaperone.
There's still time for a chaperone.
So, thank you, John. It does say two thousand and nineteen on the request.
Yes, it does, okay. Sorry, we didn't catch that.
Just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you for the clarification, I think we still have our committee's support on the trip. And I'll turn it over to you, Mr. Cozart.
Well, I had the opportunity already to do the certificates of academic excellence. Those three students are three examples. They're not the only three students that could have represented the rest of their class. It's a wonderful group of students. And so, I do this. Helpful and strategic on my part, I have it, that we were doing them pass, Mike frankly, to remind us of the students that we, with a pretty, pretty special title in this one. The, we are having an open house tomorrow night for the intermediate school. An open house for the general public. We held one, of course, for the parents and the students, but there were many other people out in the community who we know want to come in. So I hope the weather will help us out. And that will be from five thirty through seven o'clock tomorrow night for the general public. And then on the horizon, we're in pretty good shape, sticking on our plan. We rolled forward the ESL update for next month. And I think Mike and Jean both pointed out that Kelly will give even some more data and some positive data on the progress that our ELs are making in the school district. And then we'll have school improvement plans. Usually, we just have a one-page graph on the homeschool to show you how many students are enrolled in homeschooling in the district. That's the plan for next week. Yeah, I've got to bring that over. We've, I think we've made one suggestion for a change and are pretty close to saying, okay, it's time to go.
I can't really remember why we had this standard space reporting in the parking lot.
Somebody had asked for an update on that, I think it was Pauline. And specific to what's happening at the elementary and the transition from elementary into middle school.
I see. Okay, okay, thank you. So that might be something interesting to do, maybe after the first or second O4 cards go out. Okay, fantastic. Well, that sounds great to me. The agenda for the next meeting sounds wonderful. Are there any other comments or questions from committee members? Any updates on other subcommittees that are in the meeting?
We did some little policy this morning and we're nearing the end of the I policy. So we're pretty much on track for our three-year reviews.
Fantastic, well, thank you so much for that. Without further ado, may I have a motion to adjourn? Oh, Natalie. Natalie! Would you like to update us on all the fantastic things that student council's been up to?
Well, we just got through homecoming, which was miracle in itself, so...
It was a very well-done event, it was beautiful.
I think it was a success. It's always a great week, that school, all the school spirit. We're all happy to hold off, so, we have that. And then we are meeting next week to talk about what's coming up. I'm not really sure, but I can just get an update.
Taking a deep breath.
Yeah, and it was a little wild. Yeah, there's a lot coming up and a lot, it's really busy time for school right now too, so...
Yeah, grades are closing, if you're applying early to college anywhere, that's happening.
But a good week.
Awesome. Well, I thought homecoming was just fantastic, I mean, certainly the weather helped, but the community spirit, the kids' spirit, I mean, everything was just really, it was a very caring and wonderful community feel. So, well done. Excellent. Now may I have a motion to adjourn? Thank you all very much for your great...
Thank you.